Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We are going to call the City Council for Monday, June 15th, 2023 to order. We'll begin with prayer from Pastor Tommy Wright from New Jackson Tabernacle.
You want to step up tonight, Alderman?
Yeah.
Gracious Father, we come once again, first of all, saying thank you.
Thank you.
Lord, we ask you to bless this council as we go about doing your business today, Lord. We ask you to continue to strengthen our mayor, all those that on City Council, Lord, and then we pray again that our business will be conducted in the order that we all get along and do things that need to be done. We ask you to bless our city of Kankakee. Lord, we have a lot of things going on, a lot of good things, some things that need to be adjusted, and we pray that we can come together and do the things that are just the things that are going on in our city right now. These are many blessings. We ask you in the name of your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
The City Council leaders and pledges allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we're going to have public comment. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal tax upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Tammy Mason Miller.
Hi, my name is Tammy Mason Miller. I reside at 1153 East Merchant Street. I've been there over 22 years. It's my home. Thank you, city. They gave me the $5,000 when I was moving in. Okay, my issue is the address 1129, the right of me, has weeds from the front to the back wrapped around to the other side, and they have grown into trees. I've spoken with Alderman, city, now I'm here. I received a letter last year when it was in April raining that if I didn't cut my grass within a certain amount of time that I would be fine, the city would come cut the grass and build me. So I thought that would happen to this house next to me. It didn't. This is now a whole nother year. It's a tree. When we had that tree storm and all the trees were knocked down below down, blocking everything off, it's a limb up in the tree. If all at any time, it's not attached. I have six grandchildren that play and everybody else's grandchildren. I am the not boss of the 1100 block of East Merchant, but I try to take care of that block. We all know the history. I haven't had one problem. I get the utmost respect. I try to take care of the park across the street, keep the kids from vandalizing it. Speaking of that, we have bricks right by the podium. Some kids from not in the neighborhood dug them up. I'm just trying to let the city know before they spread. It's not going to cost us much to nail them back down or however we do it. And another thing, a neighbor of mine has two houses down. She has a grandson that is missing. He's not missing, but he's left. She's tried talking to the police, everybody about the situation. She has one leg amputated. She's trying. She wants him back home, but she feels she's not getting help from the city, the police department. She said, um, the nutjob abuse. Children's Family Service called her and asked her like where is he? What's going on? She don't know. So why are they bugging her? She needs the help. She wants. So I said, I would mention something to try to get the help that she wants or looking for. And, you know, I didn't want to mention the name, but the police department is aware of it, and when they see him, they told her that they couldn't make him come back home. He's underage. So what does she do? She doesn't want her grandson. His parents are both deceased, and she just needs some help. And I don't think that she should be harassed on like some, you know, people saying what's going on. She doesn't know. So with that being said, I just wish and pray that I let that part out. When I moved there in 2020, 2001, we know the history of Merchant, buildings, people doing everything that they shouldn't be doing. I pray and ask the Lord to give me, why can't I have school behind me? We have it. I asked him, why can't I have a park in front of me? We have it, and I thank the city for that. If there's one problem in this house, if you can bulldoze it down, I would appreciate it. That's one thing when I was sitting here, I didn't ask the Lord if people take care of it. That's one thing I didn't, but I will. So that's my story. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, look at the 1129, you said?
East Merchant, right next to 1153.
Okay.
Thank you.
Doug Ayers?
The Fourth of July is coming, and I'm going to ask Kankakee Police to enforce law about illegal fireworks. Every year, I have a neighbor next door that literally shoots them all in my yard and wants what I guess is a Roman candle with one and a half foot stick and 10 to 12 inch rectangle shaped head resting on my gas meter. And when I've called the police in the past, the same neighbor has told the police that he couldn't prove it was their fireworks, even though they were shooting the fireworks when the police arrived. They also used the excuse that others were shooting fireworks. However, many claim that everyone else is speeding when they get caught speeding, but they still get tickets. People get tickets and arrested for drugs, even though there are others doing drugs. And the same could be said about texting while driving, not wearing seatbelts, not having a child strapped in properly, except. In June of 2020, the same neighbor threatened to beat the F out of me using the F word. And when the officer came back, he said he would talk to him, but as far as I know, nothing was ever done about the threat. Last year, the lady officer came out. They told me they said they were going to stop for the night, but as soon as the officer left, they started shooting the fireworks again over my yard. And when this officer came back, she told me she confiscated the fireworks. However, the same neighbor claimed the officer told them they could blow off the rest of their fireworks, and I don't think any officer would be telling someone that they could go ahead and continue with an illegal activity. A few years ago, the local radio station I listened to mentioned there was a house fire Bradley from fireworks. And last year, during the week after the Fourth, there was a report of a garage fire in the alley in the 600 block, not too many blocks from where I live. Kids have been playing with fireworks at the time. I've been hit with the debris from a neighbor's fireworks, and I should not have to be cleaning up the debris caused by my neighbor. And also, the thick cardboard tube debris does not chew up well with a lawnmower. There is such a thing as negligence when there's a law that can prevent damage to property or injury to a person when the law is not being enforced. I will also point out that my wife is disabled, and I'm handicapped, and it causes undue burden on me to have to clean up my yard because of an inconsiderate neighbor. It's hard enough to keep up with the yard work as it is without that. Again, I'm asking that if it happens this year, that the police ticket my neighbor and confiscate the fireworks, as well as let them know they can't continue doing it as fireworks are illegal. If I get any damage to my house, garage, or any other part of my property, or I get injured from these fireworks, I will let my insurance company know that I've called the police in the past and have addressed this City Council about this issue. I'd also like to point out, there's a severe drought here in Illinois right now, and the grass is extremely dry, so it's easy to catch it on fire. Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to item 5A. Roll call, City Council.
Jones.
Present.
Noble.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Tully.
Present.
Otero.
Present.
Cruz.
Here.
14 present, zero absent.
We do have a quorum. 5B, Department heads?
Kidwell.
Here.
LaRoche.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
Sanji.
Present.
Lopez.
Here.
Pigott.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Beasley.
Here.
Hoffman.
Present.
Crosswell.
Here.
Pettigrew.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 6. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, May 15th, 2023?
So move. Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
I'll make the second.
We have a second from Alderman Tully. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Here.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Minutes are approved from Monday, May 15th, 2023. Next is item 7, petitions. We do have several here, and so we'll ask Mr. Hoffman to give us information from the Planning Commission as we move through each of these. The first one is item 7A.
PB 2023-3-2, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a food truck park and outdoor bar at 434 North Harrison Avenue, Kankakee.
Mr. Hoffman, can you give us a quick update of the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to. The Planning Commission or Planning Board actually held two hearings on this property, one in April, one in May. The continued continuation was due to an interest in getting a refined site plan, which we received at the second meeting. The Planning Board was supportive of this request, but did add a number of conditions. One of those conditions essentially changed the nature of the request a little bit and dropped the bar component of it. They weren't comfortable having a bar in that location, given proximity to residential properties that are just immediately to the south of that. But there are conditions included having a more detailed site plan, going through our normal site plan review process the city requires. That site does need some improvements in terms of pavement and those kind of things, and we will be able to address that, make sure there's proper drainage through the site plan review process. They requested that there be some, a little bit of a buffer between the food truck court and the residential properties to the south, that no shipping containers be placed on the property. The original application did include a shipping container for the bar portion of the project, but since that's been removed, there would be no shipping containers on this property, that the hours of operation would be between 11:00 AM and 10:00 PM, that there would be no more than 10 food trucks on the site at any one time, that they make sure that they have at least 14 parking, 14 off-street parking spaces provided for customers and employees, and lastly, alcohol shall not be sold or consumed on the subject property. So with those recommendations, recommended conditions, the Planning Board did recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 7B.
PB 2023-4-2, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a gaming cafe establishment at 2257 East Court Street, Kankakee.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, so this is a proposed gaming cafe that would be located within the Ricky Rocket's development. It would be in that free, that standalone building that's essentially immediately to the east of East Ridge Drive, that would contain the dispensary and then its gaming cafe. In a separate tenanted space, there'd be a wall between them. They'd be separated and operated independently and separately. The Planning Board did hold a public hearing on this in May, was comfortable with the proposal. There's adequate parking. The location's easy to get to and accessible, and there weren't a lot of neighbors in the area. There really weren't any public comments at the hearing, so Planning Board recommended approval.
This is part of the three liquor licenses that Ricky Rocket's development had earmarked for it. If you remember, we did do the Class V video gaming license, and the council authorized a maximum of six of those. This was one of the earmarked ones. This will put us at five total, leaving one available. And as the council talked about, as we get a lot of calls for the video gaming, I had kind of directed towards the first ward, as that would be an ideal location, as there isn't one there now to talk to the Alderman and the first ward if somebody's looking for that last video gaming license. So this is part of the overall development of Ricky Rocket, so as I mentioned again, one of their three licenses. So is there a motion for the suspensions of rules for the passage of this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones.
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Is there any questions, comments, discussions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 7C.
PB 2023-4-3, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of landscaping contractor shop with outdoor storage, with an outdoor storage yard at 1291 South 7th Avenue, Kankakee.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, so this one would generally be a permitted use for a contractor's business in this district, except for the outdoor storage. The outdoor storage triggered the need for the conditional use permit. We did hold a public hearing for the Planning Board on this case in May. There were a few residents there just asking a few questions about how parking and those kind of things were handled, would be handled. The parking for all their employees is going to be inside the outdoor storage yard, the fenced-in area. The Planning Board wanted to make sure that that fence was set back a little bit from debris, so there's some space to do some landscape improvements and buffering there. They actually have submitted an application to the Building Department for the fence already. They're ready to get going as soon as you guys approve, if you approve the conditional use. The fence would be a solid wooden fence to screen all their outdoor storage equipment. In the future, they may come back and add an additional storage building in back, but it'll be inside the fenced area as well. So Planning Board was comfortable with this proposal and recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to place the suspended rules for the passage of this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Marzak. Roll call.
Hey, no. Not that there's anything wrong with that.
Alderman.
He said that last week, too.
Still rehearsing the speech for everybody who's around for later. Sorry about that.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson.
I'm thinking about it.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions, comments, or discussions related to the ordinance?
I'll just say that I think it's a good addition over there, and the only concern was, you know, the setback, so people don't pull up to the stop sign and they're blocked by any building or fence. And that was addressed by the Planning Board on the setback. I believe it was eight feet from the sidewalk. So I think that's the only concern, and good with it.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Item 7D.
PB 2023-4-4, an ordinance rezoning 274 West Bourbon A Street, 518 to 580 South 3rd Avenue, even addresses only, and 285 West River Street from commercial C2 to residential R2.
Mr. Hoffman? I think we've done this a few times.
We have done this a few times, yes. This is another situation where there's a mismatch between the existing use of property out there and the existing zoning. This property on the east side of Third between Bourbon A and River is currently zoned C2 commercial. However, it is all residential in nature and character. There's a home out there. There's a duplex out there. There's some vacant lots, but it is all residential along that stretch of Third. So this proposal is to rezone it to residential to match the use. This was driven, again, by a property transaction that is being held up because of the mismatch. The lender did not want to loan the money for the purchase of the property, knowing that it couldn't be rebuilt as what it currently is if it wasn't rezoned. So we decided to go ahead and rezone the whole block there to make that whole area consistent with the current use. Planning Board was comfortable with this and recommended.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance?
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 8, communications. Item 8A.
A presentation by the Kankakee Police Department recognizing Sam Budgowski on his promotion to sergeant.
Deputy Chief Kidwell?
So Sam was recently promoted to the rank of sergeant, I believe it was May 16, 2023. Sam's a valuable resource to our police department. He's married to Sarah, and they have two children. Sam, many of you may recognize him. He's very involved in our traffic stop initiative program, community outreach. He's a elderly service officer. He's a field training officer. He's a member of the ILEAS Team 3 South. He's a member of the Kankakee Emergency Response Team. Sam was a field training officer. He was one of our initial officers in the Problem Marine Policing Unit, and he's also holds several certificates in different disciplines, and he does a lot of our training and house service training for the police department. So needless to say, Sam is very valuable to us. He's in the Detective Bureau right now, and he's a sergeant there, so he'll be there for some time. We're very, very grateful to have you. Congratulations, Sam.
Well, he handed me the mic, so I guess I'll say something. I just want to say I'm proud to be here at Kankakee. Just want to continue to serve as best as I can, and I'll make the city proud of what we have here. I think we got a good thing going, and we want to keep it that way.
Next, we'll move on to item 8B. And if it's per the City Council's request, we could combine 8B, 8C, and 8D, but I'll let Clerk Allred go first.
Sure. Item B is the Juneteenth Celebration. Community Council is requesting permission to host their Freedom Festival Parade and also street closure of East Birch Street from North Hobbie Avenue to East Sicker Street on the side of Pioneer Park to host the Freedom Festival on Saturday, June 17, 2023, from 12:00 PM until 8:00 PM. Item C, Pagash Engineering Inc. is requesting a noise permit and street closure of North Skyler Avenue from East Oak Street to East Court Street to host their grand opening private event on Friday, June 16, 2023, from 5:00 PM until 11:00 PM. And D, the Rotary Club of Kankakee is requesting permission to rent the Farmers Market gazebo area to host Kankakee Day on Wednesday, June 21, 2023, from 2:00 PM until 6:00 PM.
Does the council wish to act on these individually, or would they wish to combine them?
Combine.
Point of order, can I abstain as to one of the individual items if they are putted on together?
Yeah.
The same as the bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion to combine items 8B, C, and D?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the items eight B, C, and D?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Approve the three requests. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Is there any questions or comments regarding these closures? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Abstain.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye to all, but I abstain to as to C, avoid a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one extension.
Okay. The requests are approved. Next is item nine, standing committees, item nine A.
Building and code for Thursday, April 20, 2023.
Alderwoman Malone, Malone Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. We held the Building and Code Enforcement Committee meeting on April the 20th. We did have a forum, and we discussed the following items. We had our minutes for February the 16th, 2023. They were approved. We have had a bills for February and March of 2023. They were approved. We also had the director's report. We had no questions about the director's report, but Director Nelson was going to contact DC Kit and Ms. Laird at the Animal Control to see if we can get them to attend our next meeting. At the time, the animal control was full, and they were not picking up any animals. They were only scanning animals and returning them to the owners if they had a chip in them. Also, Alderman Marzak suggested that the police purchase chip scanners to assist animal control. Director Nelson reported that if there were issues with the hedgehogs or any wild animals, they were to be reported to Wildlife and not Animal Control. For our new business, we just discussed that the house in the 800 block of North Greenwood had been cleaned up, and we thanked Director Nelson and the department and Public Works for assisting with that. We also were discussing an ordinance to address the Airbnbs, because there are ten known operating plus two new ones located on Emery and Kennedy Drive. The committee suggested that the legal department add Airbnbs to Vietnam Breakfast and have to receive a business license and that this be addressed by the ordinance committee. Alderman Barron discussed the crime-free housing ordinance and adding it into the legal, illegal dumping solid waste ordinance. The committee agreed with this suggestion. There was no further business, there was no executive session, and we adjourned at 6:08 PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Next is item nine B.
License and franchise for Thursday, April, May 4, 2023.
Alderwoman Johnson?
So, we met on Thursday, May 4, in city chambers. All of our committee members were present. We had a few guests, Mayor Curtis, Alderman Osenga, Stephen Johnson from Comcast, and the state from the Park District was there. We had no public comments. The minutes from the April 6 meeting were approved. We had two old business items that were stayed under Old Business. For our new business, Comcast Business Surveillance gave a presentation, a lot of information and services that they offer. The takeaway was that our police department and the IG department look into it further and see if any of those services would be of benefit to us. We had no executive session, and we.
Thank you, Alderwoman Johnson. We're going to move on to item 10, report of officers, item 10 A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $605,909.14.
Is there a motion to approve the City of Kankakee report of officers' bills for this month?
I'll make a motion to approve the report of officers for the City of Kankakee in the amount of $605,909.14.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
I'll make that second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Is there any question or comments regarding the bills for the City of Kankakee? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for the City of Kankakee are approved. Next is item 10 B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $806,313.28.
Is there a motion to pay the bills for Environmental Services Utility?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Osenga. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills for Environmental Services? Seeing none, roll call.
Okay.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Yeah, aye.
Osenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
I abstain as to check 33502 to Barron Hewitt Oil and 33518 to Gordon Electric Supply to avoid a conflict of interest.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Bills for Environmental Services are approved. Item 11, unfinished business, we have none. We'll move into item 12, new business, item 12 A.
An ordinance declaring certain property surplus of the City of Kankakee and the Community Development Agency and authorizing the sale thereof.
As you see in the list here, this is, the ECDA office has done some, we'll call it spring cleaning, found a lot of items that aren't being used, and so we're looking to surplus these items. There's even a Webster's dictionary in here if you're really into it, so, old school.
What is that?
You can Google it and find out. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Prude. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage?
Aye, summo.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Prude. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 12 B.
An ordinance amending chapter 32, section, section 231 entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. Handicap parking signs established at 427 South Lincoln Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for passage of this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Is there any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 12 C.
An ordinance amending chapter 34 of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, Superintendent of the Environmental Services Utility, section 34 dash 101.4, first, and this is first reading.
So, we have this on first reading. We'll bring this back at the next city council for second reading. This has been discussed at several meetings at the Environmental Services Utility Board. As you know, we are still without a superintendent for the position. It's, it's, we've had some difficulty finding the right person. Part of that is we have a requirement in there that the person has to be from an accredited college of engineering. We did change that language. You should see it in your packet. It is redlined that we changed that from shall till may. It's still of desire that we'd like to have that, but it is not a diehard requirement. So, we made those changes into the city code, so please review those. And if you have any questions or comments, please let us know before the next meeting, and we can discuss those, and then we'll have this on for discussion at the Environmental Services Utility Board meeting also. Next, we're going to move on to item 12 D, and that is appointments. I'll let clerk call, read these, and then it'll be council's decision if you want to lump these together or if you want to do these individually.
Okay. Item one, planning board, Deborah Terrell. Two, planning board, Arthur Lacks. Three, planning board, Beverly Hood. Four, Kankakee Riverfront Society, Michael Cobb. Five, Kankakee County Convention and Visitors Bureau, David Barron. And six, police, police pension board, Elizabeth Kubel.
One through five are all reappointments from the current board. They currently serve on the board at this time, and so this is a reappointment for them. We still do have another planning board seat that we need to fill, and we need to fill a slot in the Police and Fire Commission also. The pension, Police Pension Board, Ms. Assistant Comptroller Maureen Kambeck had sat, served on that position for the City of Kankakee. With her retiring from the City of Kankakee, requesting to put Comptroller Elizabeth Kubel on that, she has to attend those meetings most of the time anyways due to financial part of it, so. Up to the city council, if there's a motion to combine items, can we combine those, or can we just load them all together? We need to have a motion for that. Okay, so is there a motion to, is it desire for the council to go one-on-one, or is there a motion to combine items D one through six for approval?
Combine.
Combine.
Oh, go ahead. You make the...
I'll make a motion to combine them.
So we have a motion from Alderman Navarez to combine items D one through six. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there any questions or comments regarding the combination? Seeing none? Okay. Alderman Marzak.
I was just going to say, I've attended many Planning Board meetings and it's kind of a important, very important job, and to my knowledge, they don't receive one dime. And we spend a lot of time on each individual case, so I think at least everyone is worthy of, if they're willing to do it, we should give them the opportunity.
So we have a motion and a second to combine items D one through six. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Motion to combine is approved. Is there a motion to approve the appointments of items D one through six? Items 12D, one through six. I'll make the motion. We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there any questions or comments regarding the appointments? Seeing none? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Appointments are all approved. Next is item 13, motions and resolutions. Item 13A.
A resolution authorizing the execution of a proposal for both fuel supply between Baron Hewitt Oil Company and City of Kankakee.
So we do this annually when we go out for bid for our fuel supply. We had our bid opening, I'm losing track, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and Baron Hewitt Oil was the low bid at the sealed bid opening. And so this is a resolution approving the acceptance of that low bid. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Osenga. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Cobbs. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Next is item 13C.
A resolution accepting a grant of permanent public utility easement and a temporary construction easement over certain property located in the city.
So this is a easement that, with the particular property that has the sinkhole, this is giving a permanent easement so that we can have the storm line run through there and also granting us access over to the property so we can do the repairs. This resolution is before you tonight. We're hoping by the next meeting, we will need the neighbors' cooperation also for similar things and to be able to access through one of the yards to get to these backyards as these houses are close to each other to be able to get equipment back there. But this is at least, they have agreed to all the documents that were prepared by legal, and so we're bringing this to council tonight for acceptance. Is there a motion to accept this resolution for the permanent and temporary easements?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobbs. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Any questions or comments regarding this? Seeing none? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Next is item 13C.
A resolution accepting a grant of permanent public utility easement and a temporary construction easement over certain property located in the city.
So this is a easement that, with the particular property that has the sinkhole, this is giving a permanent easement so that we can have the storm line run through there and also granting us access over to the property so we can do the repairs. This resolution is before you tonight. We're hoping by the next meeting, we will need the neighbors' cooperation also for similar things and to be able to access through one of the yards to get to these backyards as these houses are close to each other to be able to get equipment back there. But this is at least, they have agreed to all the documents that were prepared by legal, and so we're bringing this to council tonight for acceptance. Is there a motion to accept this resolution for the permanent and temporary easements?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobbs. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Any questions or comments regarding this? Seeing none? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Resolution passes. One moment. We do have a need for executive session tonight. I don't expect it to be very long, it's more of an update, but we do need an executive session for 5ILCS 120/2C5, the consideration of purchase, lease, or acquiring real estate property and the purchase or lease of real estate. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Marshall. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? We have a second from Alder...
Mike.
Alderman Prue. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
We're in the executive session, and again, hopefully we shouldn't be too long, so we'll have to clear the chambers for a bit.[547.66]
Okay. Sir, motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Alderman Navarez, all in favor.
Aye.
Roll call.
Jones.
Present.
Noble.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Tally.
Here.
Ossing.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Barron. Malone Marshall.
Cruz.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
We have a quorum. There is no action resulting from executive session, so we'll move on to item seventeen, city council member comments. Alderwoman Johnson.
I think this has been talked about before, but I noticed the other day when I was in some of our neighboring communities, their gas prices were thirty to forty cents a gallon less than ours. That seems to be a huge difference in the same day, like I was driving across. I don't know, I know there are guidelines and things in place by the government, but I don't know if there's any to look into that.
So I had talked to several people about it, I don't have the answer yet, no one seems to know. I haven't, no one's told me the answer or the reasoning why.
Okay.
And I, so I don't have a good answer for it yet, I've been trying to figure that out myself, why there's such a wide range and what it goes from there, so.
And then I have another one, that we are having our sixth ward meeting on Wednesday evening, in the Beckman Park Harbor area. Seven PM.
Seven PM, okay. Seven PM at the Becker, Beckman Park Harbor area, correct?
Yes.
Alderman Malone Marshall.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to bring to the council and your attention that over on Hobby, we have a problem with the gravel being left open as it is. The utilities have completed the work that they have done over there, and there's patches of area where it's just gravel, and the through traffic is constantly running through it, and it's dusty over there, causing, you know, can cause health problems. And as well as the sidewalk has patches that are now gravel, and as you can, as if you go over and look at it, you'll see where the gravel is sinking, and now it's like people can just trip, you can see people just tripping as they walk down that sidewalk. It could cause some problems as far as lawsuits. We also have a question as whose insurance will pay for it, who's going to be responsible for people if they trip in these patches of gravel. Personally, I live there, so I wanted to know if we could get the gravel areas covered. I don't know when the utility companies are going to complete whatever they're doing, I don't know what they're doing, but as an older person, I'm asking to be made aware of what utilities are working over there, when they're going to be working, are they done, and how soon can we get these gravel areas covered over there? I know we have the Hobby Street reconstruction coming, but we do not want to wait until a reconstruction is done, and that could be months or even a year from now, and keep having these patches of gravel over on Hobby, it's a main thoroughfare, and it needs to be covered. Thank you.
Alderman Cruz.
Just to add to that, there hasn't been any work done over there since May eighteen. So we like to know when they're going to start back up, what they're going to do, because it's just sitting there since May eighteen, so we need to see something done in that area. Thank you.
Good. Alderman Ossing.
Yeah, I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to make a comment about the bracata camera system that we have in our city. We had a situation the other day, everybody knows there's only so many police, and the police can't be everywhere. There was a situation the other day where a couple ladies got into it about something over by Millie Progler's school, they separated and went their separate ways, and one lady went home, and shortly thereafter, a gentleman came to her house, and he had an AR-15 rifle and he's banging on her door. You know, the lady was, you know, smart, she didn't open the door, and he left shortly thereafter, and the police were able to locate, pick up his pickup truck, and you got a license plate number of that pickup truck because of the bracata camera systems I have in our city. And shortly thereafter, they stopped the guy, they arrested him, and they recovered that AR-15, and nobody got hurt, so, you know, kudos to everybody in this room that, you know, agreed to buy these bracata cameras, we've got them all over the city now, and they've been a great asset to our, and congratulations to policemen for the job that they did. Thank you. Oh, by the way, one more thing, we've got public safety tomorrow night at 5:30, and we are going to do a bracata camera demonstration in the detective bureau. Anybody wants to come, I'm urging everybody to come, we'll have our meeting here, it'll be a short meeting, but then we're going to go over detective bureau, and they're going to, IT guys are going to show us all about this bracata camera system and how it works. It's quite a system, it's been a great asset for our police department. Thank you.
Alderman Jones.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I would like to say, I'm still so excited about what's going on on the east side, I want to say also, you know, I was, I walked myself into some trouble the other day, sometime you go and check on your neighborhood, you walk into some trouble, man, and a lot of, you know, leading back behind Crestview Village, there was a whole lot of stuff, and I never, believe it or not, drove back, I didn't see it, and the person there, you know, that's running, she's doing a good job, and she said, Alderman, did you see this? And I looked, and I said, wow, I said, no, I didn't see it, but I want to, I want to say something, I made a phone call to DPW, and it was a mess, and I'm telling you, within like, within twenty-four hours, I got a phone call yesterday, or directly, no, that the lady called me and said, man, I'm really appreciative of what you did, or whatever, and I didn't know that, I figured, because you know, we're real busy, and I understood it, and, but the service, it was very, very good, because you know, we want to make sure that, that the people behind Crestview Village understand that they're part of our city, and we have to make sure that, you know, we give them the same type of service that we give throughout the city, and I just want to thank DPW for doing it, because that was the old man's work, you got to see what it looked like, and they went back and took care of it, and it really does well in our community, in certain areas where sometimes, you know, we say like the forgotten areas, but that gives a lot of hope, so I thank, I thank the city DPW department and the code that constantly works with them, also the repairs that was in the alleys, and our new, we call it our new seven, it was a lot of, you know, little sinkholes and things of that nature that have been addressed, and also, we talked about being over at the new, our new dispensary, and I drove over there, we got actual blacktop and stuff down over there going down, and instead they're rolling right along, I believe we're going to be all right, it looks real nice, and also to piggyback on, Alderman, you're right, it looks like a ghost town sometime going down there, I wish we could, I don't know how much of the cost is, maybe the engineer let us know what it would be to patch that a little bit, because really, people have heeded our warning, engineer, that we don't even have go down there, but you have to go sometime, but I know it's, because I'm telling everybody about another year it would possibly be done, but I don't know how much it would be to put something in some of them spots, it's pretty bad, it is pretty bad over there, and people have said stuff, you know, constituents, I know we're coming in other areas, but I don't know what it would take to, you know, to lay down gravel, and I, I'm tempted to say to put that, what you call that stuff, that patch that we used to put on the truck, but I don't know how good that's going to do, you know, if you throw some of that down on top, but I know the engineer would know better than me, but yeah, it's kind of rough over there, it is rough, and I'm always on the wrong side of the road, I never ride on the right side, you know, I just, I do what Alderman Jones do, I'm on the wrong side, wherever it's blacktop, I drive on it, everybody got to wait till I get out of the way, might not be the right thing to do, but my cars, I don't want to get beat up like that, so I just wanted to piggyback on that, hopefully we can get something done, because I really don't know, somebody did ask me to schedule, I didn't know the schedule of what's going on, and I said that I would bring it to the engineer to see what it would be, so they'll have a little bit of understanding of what's going on, and I believe that's all I got for tonight, thank you so much, ma'am.
Alderman O'Brien.
Just an update about the budget committee meeting, it'll be next Tuesday instead of Monday, we had some scheduling conflicts from Monday, so we'll meet on Tuesday, the thirteenth, 5:30 in here, we'll do a quick financial statement review, but then spend some time kind of on the bud, high level discussions about the budget, where we are now.
Alderman Tally.
I just wanted to build on what Larry was talking about here. Alderwoman Noble and I were invited after our very first meeting here by both the fire chief and the police chief to come and give us a tour, and they gave us absolutely the best tour we could possibly think of, but I am so totally impressed with, this happened before we came along, with the capabilities of the camera system, and we were able to see some of these things that had been handled because of that capability. I just, I mirror your sentiment, kudos to those who helped to bring it forward into the city.
Alderwoman Noble.
I would just like to invite everyone to this Juneteenth celebration of the park, and we had to change our route because of the Hobby situation, so we are going a different way, but we're still doing the same thing, and it's going to be exciting, starting at eight o'clock in the morning, and ending in Pioneer Park at twelve. I'd like to invite the police department by all means to set up their second cameras, things that they did for us last year, and just everybody, make sure that we have a safe and enjoyable day. Well, twelve to eight is the park, but the parade starts at eight. I beg your pardon? The date is June seventeenth. June seventeenth.
Alderman Marzak.
A lot of people have been asking questions about the eye here. I'd love to say that they were filming a Rocky movie downtown Kankakee, and I was invited, but actually, I'm just going to say this, not for sympathy, but just for awareness, that I noticed a spot a few months ago, and, you know, it turns out it was basal cell cancer, which is a very common skin cancer, like three million people a year get it, non-melanoma, about two thousand people die, but they, the people that die most likely do not get on it early. So if you see a spot on your face, don't wait, just go ahead and, you know, make an appointment with your doctor, and it don't have to be a very big spot, it just, it could be a little something odd, just get it checked out. But Tuesday, they carved a section out, and it's ninety-nine percent, you know, success rate that it has cured, and then they carved a section of skin and they replaced it, so versus, you know, every individual inquiry, that's what it's about.
Alderman. Go ahead. Is there any department head comments? Starting at back, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Figgish.
Thank you, mayor, just kind of like to go over a couple project updates. First, Alderwoman Malone Marshall, regarding Hobby, no, I apologize for how Hobby looks, you know, trying to wrangle in utility companies is quite a, you know, feat, especially when we have four of them there. We did talk to NICOR though, since they just finished their main and their services, they asked if they wanted us to, or wanted them to restore the sidewalks and the patching, and I said absolutely yes on the west side of that road, because to your point, it could be another year before we're on that side of the road and done, because the first phase will be on the east side, so, so they are going to do that, I'm waiting on a schedule from them, so. Aqua is finishing up their water main on the south end from Oak to Court Street, so they got another block, and then they have about six or seven services to do, and then that'll be done. AT&amp;T has all their conduits in, but they haven't started pulling cables yet, we keep asking daily on the schedule from them, and are not getting that, but ComEd is done, so as soon as AT&amp;T starts pulling their cables and doing their fiber cutovers, we're hopeful that the work can get started, but they are going to, NICOR is going to restore everything on the west side of the road that you're referring to, so, and all the, all the cut-up street from the water main and the gas main will all be patched, so, that's, you know, that's the best we can do, really, and then hopefully, once they're on the east side of the road, they're going to finish that, pave it before traffic goes back on it, so it'll just be, you know, and then we'll switch over to the other side, probably next year would be my guess, given the schedule, so that's kind of the high level view schedule that I have right now, like I said, we've been asking them for updates and not getting a lot of clear communication, so I will pass along further updates as I have it available, so. East Ridge Drive was paved today, they're going to try to stripe it this week, we want to get it open, but I don't want to open that road until the lights are installed, so we're waiting on streetlights, I don't think it would be wise to open up a brand-new road without lighting at night for people to see where they're going, so, so we're going to wait for that. North Skylar is pretty much done, so it, I think it turned out pretty nice, and they got a couple of minor things to finish up on that. South Skylar, Outson has finished the traffic control cabinet installation, all the cameras are up, so you'll probably notice a drastic increase in the flow through that intersection now with the, with the brand-new cabinet and traffic controller there, and then MFT is probably going to get started next week is what we were told, maybe later this week, so you might start seeing some activity on that, so, that's all I have.
Any other department heads? Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to keep mine brief, I got two things I want to let people know, is we are moving forward with a city app for the city of Kankakee, that will be on, everybody will be able to download it on their phone, download it on their iPad device, whatever type of system that they use, it's a, we hope to have that up, I'm hoping within the next forty-five to sixty days at the latest, you'll be able to go through, you could report a busted window, a tree that needs to be trimmed, pothole, graffiti, the, really, we can go as far as we want to go, we also want to limit it so we don't overburden our department heads, but basically, a resident can take a picture, it'll load, it'll send it to the proper department, it'll take a location of where they're at, so they know, it'll send them a email or text that says this has been received by the department, and then when it's fixed and cured, it'll send a notification back that it's been taken care of, so that process is going forward, and it's a relatively inexpensive tool that we can use for the city of Kankakee, but I think the residents will really enjoy it, and it'll help you as Alderman also, because a lot of times they'll be able to report directly to the department heads that need it, but we'll link it so that the Alderpeople in each ward get notified also that their constituent had made a notification, so, want to put that out. And then the last part, as Deputy Chief Kidwell had mentioned, Chief Passwater has submitted his retirement paper, he's moving forward with retirement, June sixteenth, so a week from this Friday will be his last day, he's not here tonight, actually, this is his thirtieth anniversary today, he's flying home from a vacation that was planned a long time ago, it just happened to fall as we were, as we were releasing all this, so I believe everybody got a text from me last Thursday, we let the police department know, and we let the Alderman know first before it went out, and then we notified the rest of the city later on that afternoon, employees and the media from there, so we'll talk a lot more, I hope that on the twentieth, we can have Chief Passwater here and we can recognize him, but as Deputy Chief Kidwell said, on Friday here in the council chambers at two o'clock, typically like we do for a lot of our police officers, we'll have a brief ceremony and outgoing for him. I did, I did want to let that announcement kind of breathe on its own for a few days, allow him the recognition that he deserved, but obviously, everybody would like to know what's the next step for the city of Kankakee Police Department, and the plans that we have for you that I want to present to everybody tonight is effective Friday, June sixteenth, when Passwater is officially retired at two o'clock, I'll name Deputy Chief Kidwell as the interim chief at that time, and then I would like to bring before the city of council on Tuesday, June twentieth, I'd like to bring for council consent, the appointment of Deputy Chief Kidwell to Chief of Police for the city of Kankakee, and Commander Austin as Deputy Chief of the city of Kankakee. That is the plan moving forward, I'm hoping that council will agree with that plan and move forward that we can have consent and confirmation of that on Tuesday, June twentieth, and keep the continuity that we have with the department moving forward and the outstanding job that I think they are doing, so. I wanted to relay that to the council tonight and to the public, and if you have any questions or comments, in particular the Alderman and the Alderwoman, please reach out to me if it's after council here, or next day if you want to talk about it, I'm happy to listen, but that is the plan that we have forward, moving forward, so. With that, we'll keep it simple, and we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Here's the motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Marshall, there's a second, Alderman Navarez, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, thank you.